We'll begin the meeting. Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. We'll begin the meeting by introducing our new Commissioner, Bob Cattin. Lieutenant Sinequa.
Thank you, sir. Happy to be here.
And rather than keeping Vicki Brayley here for the whole entire meeting, we'll just present her this plaque that the staff got for her retirement. So if you'd come forward, please. Appreciate you all the hard work you did. It doesn't say how many years, but I think 10 years was it? 11 years, 12 years, 13 years. Thank you very much. Enjoy your vacation. I didn't know if you wanted to stay with the whole meeting. Okay, we'll begin with the clerk's report.
The minutes are on the desk.
Well, we have the two of us who are here, one's missing. So Bob wasn't here, so he'd have to stay.
Should we wait until then and maybe?
Maybe.
Maybe we'll have three.
Good idea. And Nutrition Report. So moved to number three. EMA approval to hire a full-time dispatch. Ms. R. Doug. Doug, Tim, Commander, Dispatch.
Yes, we did some interviews and we did offer position to Sarah Carey of Wilton. She has experience in crisis management and she comes from West Virginia to help and she did accept.
Would you give her some name again?
Sarah Carey.
Sarah Carey. Okay, we make a motion.
I make a motion that we...
That's for the full-time dispatch.
Full-time. I make a motion that we offer position to Sarah Carey.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion on that? Comments? Singing or all those in favor? Vote, thank you. Good luck. And item number four. I'm a little puzzled by this question. That's an ATM for the jail. Why would they need an ATM when they're not more than a year?
I'll explain that, sir. For years, we wanted an ATM at the jails. It's pretty standard for jails, at least throughout Maine and throughout the country, to have an ATM. So let's say you get arrested on vacation. Let's say you're accused of arrest on vacation. You have nobody to come get you. You have a $500 cash payment. You have the money in the bank. You have no way to access that money. You have nobody to release your ATM card to, to go to the bank and throw $500, $600 in the bank. And in the old days, we used to do that, but that's too much liability on us and we don't do that now. So now, if you sit overnight or even longer to go to court, it's available or maybe somebody luckily shows up with the money. Now, we just take use of the lobby, throw the money, move.
So that's where you could put the ATM, is it in the lobby?
Is in the lobby, yes.
All of the cells?
No. And we tried ordering the local banks, but it's kind of a for-profit thing for them. It's not loomery enough for them, the volume that we have for them to do. But mainly ATMs and special events in different jails. I was asked about the transport that I had back and she said, "Wow, where'd that come from?" That wasn't here 10 years ago. So I called and said, "Hey, we can work with the insurance bros."
So who's going to be responsible for that?
Maybe ATMs. Basically, we have to provide power and internet cable and that's it.
No cost associated?
No.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept the ATM.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? How do we proceed with the process? All those in favor? It's a vote. You want your ATM? Item number five, contract for pre-trial services.
I can speak on it, but have a week. You guys had a meeting with Elizabeth and Elizabeth's coming from the inquiry file. They have requested a higher increase from 3% to 7%. It was whatever you get that we made, just needed to be voted on for a 5% increase. And the contract has been modified, the lead isn't from you?
It is from that.
Yep, I have a copy.
Just waiting for the second service to make it.
Did you guys have a motion for the 5% here?
We need a motion to accept the pre-trial services contract.
Yep, I make a motion that we accept the pre-trial services contract.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further comments? All favor of the motion? Do you have plenty of time or do you...? I see we want to go into it. So we start with the budget, review of the budget.
There we go.
Ah, there you go. Did he stop me, John? You want that?
No.
Okay. He's covered the first by right of.
Okay, good.
We're going to move on to the budget and then you have backup right there.
Deal?
No, that, I have to weaken for you to make a motion of this. That's for the minutes of the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Since you and I, the only ones that were here.
You can move to accept the last one as a meeting.
I'll second that. I'll second that. Any further discussion on accepting the minutes of the meeting? All those in favor? Right, it's a vote. No, we didn't have a...
That's right.
We didn't have a clerk's, Treasury report. So we'll just move to the budget. Amy, you want to kick that off or...?
Sure. So I replied to the sample motions for each of the departments. And I suggest we go through them as they are on the agenda. We have to check the numbers to the actual budget that was approved at the Budget Committee. But you could be, have extra files to make sure.
And if we want to change any of them, we just make that motion for them.
It has to be unanimous, right? It has to be unanimous.
Has to be unanimous. If so, if the motion fails, then it doesn't pass, then the motion that the Budget Committee made passed.
So I needed the motions based on the Budget Committee.
And then one beside it's out, right? Here we have the Commissioners and the Budget. Is that the Budget Committee on the right?
Yeah.
So if you want to change one of them.
The only thing, when they brought down the $4,000.
Yeah, most of them they brought down. There are some that they did increase. And of course, they, we have the program grants.
So the first one is the... That somewhere there is, that's the extension, right?
Correct.
And then the one right below it, that's the EMA?
Yes.
Francis, the whole sheet of the motion.
Okay. Is it not in the same order?
I'm sorry, they're not.
They increased it. We had $55,000. They have, the Budget Committee has $62,000. They kicked it out. $7,000.
Budget Committee went with the department's budget.
They gave people what they asked for. That's still fine. You get it? Sit near the bar. Third one to the bar.
Okay. I move that we go with the Commissioners $55,000.
I'll second that. You want to make a page. So it's there from the bar. So the motion is... We second it. Second the Commissioners' turn.
That's comfortable?
All those in favor of the motion at $55,000? So that one goes back. Next one was EMA.
Make a motion that we accept the budget amount $208,792.29 under EMA. Is that what we have? What we agree to?
That was a second, third page from the top.
$200.
We had set at...
So there is a difference.
$200 total. So $8,000 difference. There's the Budget Committee's more.
And that was my request to them. They went through the budget and verified the flex benefits and...
So this is some of those, correction. Is that the same thing in the other one?
Yes.
And that, okay. I second the motion.
And move to second that we stay with the Budget Committee at $208,792.29. All in favor of the motion? The Members. Communications.
And is this again a correction because of the...
Yeah.
All right, I think we go $178,000.
Second it. Moving in second it. We stay with the Budget Committee recommendation. All in favor of that motion? The Members. District Attorney. 305.
And I move that we go with the Budget Committee. 305, $305,224.
I'll second it. Moving in second it. We stay with the Budget Committee recommendation. Further discussion? All those in favor of that motion? How many Commissioners?
I make a motion that we accept the County Commissioner's budget of $253,175.8. What was the difference there in the personal services stuff?
So the difference in this one is we did change this to the flex benefit account as well as making others. And my salary wasn't calculated correctly between the County Commissioner's budget and...
So why don't we fight about that?
So the original budget was presented to you, was calculated with the lower rate that we felt we might be going to because of the contract negotiations. And that's what prompted me to review the flex benefit.
Okay. So like $18,000 more to day one. And flex benefits is $10,000 more.
Is that what it's about?
Yeah, it's about different increases.
But this is...
This is, this is increases. The Commissioners aren't getting any benefits or any commission wages. But it's the people that work for the Commissioners, they get the benefits and the wages. So that's the increase.
So it'd be like, so who gets the flex benefit?
Each HR person. County Administrator. And Claudia.
No.
Nope, she doesn't need part nine. That should go away anyhow.
So to be transparent, we've been audited by the Mayors. And it has come to the County's attention that we are in violation of the agreement that we made with the Mayors and all elected officials are required to be offered Mayors.
Oh, what people? Collected officials?
Including you. Including you.
So this would put... So this is making the assumption that we'd have to be prepared to do it if we all wanted it. So if we don't, like if us three don't want it, right? What would that...
You still have to budget for it, depends if somebody got elected.
No, I know, but do you know what the number would be?
Oh. 7... 7.3, 7.4 is it? And then early on, there's sort of a couple thousand dollars. It's not...
And that's what that, that the match, is what that $18,000 is? But...
For, but it's for the HR, the County Administrator.
And potentially...
And potentially the free.
No estimates or cost benefit means of that?
So it's the health insurance cost for single rate plus additional $2.75 currently to help cover other costs of mental health programs.
And what's the match with the...
Different goal thing, you're in, you're in between 7.3% and 10. Or 11.
And we're basing it on a...
No. No, then don't hang around each department.
These would be based on the AC plan.
Okay, what's that?
These are the 5, 7.6. The rates changed, are changing to like...
So it's we pay the bad and then the match, right?
The employee pays that and they're...
All right, you made a motion, right?
I did. They moved in second that we accept the $253,175.08. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion? Move to Treasure.
I move that we accept the Budget Committee's proposal for $101,586.4. I'll second that.
Second that. They moved in second it. Any further discussion? Singing, all those in favor? Tech and Services.
I move that we accept the Budget Committee's proposal for $252,752.8. Second it.
Moving in second it. That we accept the Budget Committee's recommendation. Further comments? All those in favor? Corrals.
So it's in the commodity, right?
Yeah.
Which is the debt, can't write. What's, what's that?
That is the fuel.
Oh, it's fuel?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the County Boardhouse budget of $161,147.78.
Same, moving in second. Budget Committee's recommendation. Further discussion? All those in favor? Vote, move to jail.
Sheriff's Office.
Move to jail.
I move to accept the Budget Committee's proposal for $2346,232.51. I'll second that.
And they moved in second that we accept the Budget Committee's recommendation. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Sheriff's Department. That is it.
We've got two big gets in personal services and contractual services. What's that?
The personal services is the flex benefits.
Okay, so that's that correction.
Yeah, that's that correction. And the local majority is that correction and then fuel.
Fuel.
Fuel, yeah.
Is that the contractual fees? Or is that in the commodity? Because if it's still a commodity, they don't want $2,000. Or I don't know. Not even that.
I believe there are contractual...
So that would be the contractual fees?
Yes, one point add your contract portfolio and that's... I don't know whether they'll have that this year because Congress United is saying that they can't either not going out today because normally they...
All right, I make that we accept $2136,788.4. I'll second that.
Okay, they moved in second it. Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor, so signify. The vote. Move to Deeds.
Make a motion that we accept the Budget Committee's amount of $239,997.65.
Waiting to do this eventually. It's about $4,000, almost $5,000.
Now is that the same thing? I second it.
Okay, we second. We accept the Budget Committee's motion of $239,997.65. Any further comment? All in favor of that motion? It's a vote. Page will go to probate. Bring next to...
I make a motion that we accept the Budget Committee amount of $201,688.4.
I'll second that one. That's a reduction from us. Anything to... Moving in second. Any further discussion? Okay, singing, all those in favor? Some sympathize, some insurance. I suppose we have to insure. Are we going up a bit this next year or...?
I think we set.
Thank you. I'll make a motion for the Budget Committee, $69,200. That keeps creeping up annually, just like it does at your own.
Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of that motion, so signify. So vote. Debt services. I wonder how long we could go if we didn't pay this?
Wait a second, that's like on the bonds and stuff? Did we find out if that's, are those for that bond bank? They're not?
They're not.
Oh. They're all lost. What's the number?
$60,000.
$2,000. That's in the debt service? What's the total payout for all of your loans?
Gee.
I make a motion. No. I want to make a motion that we accept the Budget Committee approval of $50,008. Do we have enough money in the end that we have funds to pay off $3,000?
Probably.
Meaning, is it above that 20? You know what we're talking about this day?
Way above the 20.
So we could pay that off and still be above 20 quite a lot, right?
Right.
Can I make a motion?
Well, before we do that, I think I need to have a conversation with the bank to make sure there's no help.
Okay. Can we, when is it due, the $50,000?
It's in September.
Can we table this one, do we line that up?
No.
We can't? They're not doing their money, so it's done though.
Right, but I need you to set the budget so that I can...
Okay, so we need to put it in, right?
Right.
But we could, if it works out with the bank, pay it off and then that could just come out.
No.
No, just call back in.
But I mean, what I'm saying is, we're not going to have to pay for the $302,000 and the $50,000.
Not.
That's what I meant. We're going to pay it off, we're still going to have to pay, that's not going to be... Okay, I second that.
Who didn't know to accept the $50,008? $50,080. To Budget Committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Superior court. $3,000.
It?
Yeah, that's it. Superior court, yes.
Make a motion that we accept the Budget Committee's recommendation of $3,000.
Second it. Moving in second. Any further discussion on that motion? Singing, all those in favor? Program grants. I'm not going to make a motion on that.
What's that, what do you mean?
The program grant.
Oh.
I'm not going to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Budget Committee recommendation of $191,130 for the program grants.
And the motion failed. For lack of a second. Any other motions? Get some last one. If I made a motion, I'd make a motion that we not vote the program grants for 191,130 dollars. I think they approved in the last few years, they can assess those.
Second that.
Oh. Excuse me. You really should make positive motions and just pick them. Because then it looks like a double negative and it's very...
Okay, I make a motion that we...
Do you understand what I mean?
Yeah.
So if you want, and I think this would achieve the same goal, is that, uh, make a motion to approve the 27,700 dollars in program grants, and then...
So we had, we had, okay, here it is again. I make a motion that we accept the county's commissioner's vote of 27,700. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion? In a pause. Do go on, favor. That's our motion, and then, so this goes back, you know, you have to break this out. This will, we stand now. Alright.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So... Under that motion, does that go back to the budget committee or not?
Yeah, it goes back, but it...
Does not?
It doesn't need to go back to them. Because it failed here, we had to have all three commissioners.
So, I, I think as a point of order, you need to make a motion for the 191,130 and fail it. Because you have to be unanimous to override the budget committee.
Correct.
So, you've made a motion to fund the 27,700, and that failed, but we haven't actually failed the budget committee number.
Well, that actually didn't fail because it was two to one. It just failed to override the budget committee, it stays unanimous. So it doesn't fail.
So if we...
It's how we did it.
You're saying that if we were unanimous, right, in the 27,000, for instance?
Yeah.
Then that would have meant that the 191 would fail.
Correct.
But because we weren't, can we also do that and can we do it another way?
I think the clearest way is to make a motion for the 191,130 and fail that so that we know that we're... We try to go...
So we can make a motion...
It was a second.
Right.
So that failed. That shows that it failed.
But if we make a motion, maybe, what word?
What?
Alright, I move that we, uh, accept the 191, whatever it is, 130. City committee. I recommend you accept the 191, 130.
I'll second that.
Okay, they moved in second. 191, 130, which is following the budget committee. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, so signify. Those opposed. So, that failed. Okay? Is that it?
Yes, because we have to go back to that and then we can go and talk about what we need to add.
Yep. Okay, so we can move on to home business?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question about the budget committee?
What's that?
By far, there's only one issue going back to the budget committee, and that's the extension.
Yeah, I was, if you don't mind, can, because I didn't know that was dealing with that eight percent, can we revisit that, the first one, the extension, what are you talking about?
Yes.
So, can I, alright. Can I withdraw, I don't know how I'd say it, or just make a motion? Alright, I move that on the extension, we accept the budget committee's 62,539.
I'll second that.
They moved in second and then we accept the budget committee's recommendation, any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, so signify. And opposed?
So, Mr. Chair. Does that mean that nothing goes back to the budget committee, you agreed with the budget committee's recommendations?
No. This will go back to the budget committee because that failed. There's no other motion.
So, two items for the budget committee, the extension and the program.
Wait a second, the extension, though, is passed, the added, the sixty-two value, right? So where now?
Because you went with the...
Right, 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 right. So it's just the, it's just the other.
Say it again.
Mr. Chair, can you correct me, guys?
What's that?
Tiffany.
Tiffany wants to be right there.
You have a question, Tiffany?
Yes. So, coming from St. Patrick, that says, now the budget, after the budget of the year is completed, the budget being shared out by the budget, the rest gets that budget to the county commissioners. The county commissioners, they not for this increase, decrease of the revised budget, adopted budget, budget fee, except by unanimous vote, the county commissioners. If the adopted budget is changed by the county commissioners, the budget committee may reject that change by the very close to submit membership. At this point, the county commissioners have to change the adopted budget at this point here. And there is no change to what we have stood, directed into the county commissioners. So, there is no change according to the statute here, number four, the title thirty-eight, chapter, chapter three, subchapter one, article nine. And there is no change in the updated budget under, the difference in, so not be a change for that by the way, and then vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The rest of it?
No. Okay. Oh, okay, from the original.
So here, the budget they adopted, in order for you to change it, we have the unanimous.
Okay.
And we have not had one unanimous vote on discrepancies between the numbers.
Okay.
So that means...
So you do need protocol maintenance.
Oh, so that means that's done, right?
That's done.
Okay. That's why I want to move on to home business. Okay. Alright, home business, mental health services, is that...
The last members meeting, we, that you guys opened up the seal pitch for mental health services. We have two proposals, one from our current health providers is Metro Associates. And the other bid, you guys named it here, from Clearwater Counseling. The vote from Metro Associates was for forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the time period July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. And for Clearwater Counseling, their bid was for thirty thousand, five hundred dollars, um, for the same time period, the same coverage. The difference of fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars between the two. My recommendation would be to go with Clearwater, also a cheaper...
Yep. Question? Why is such a discrepancy in your estimation? If it's a big spread?
Say that again.
Why is such a big discrepancy in the numbers? Do you have any feel of that, or...
I really don't. I'm not really sure Metro has been our current, and what they wanted to do was just add three percent to what they were doing with them, I think that's part of that.
And Clearwater, uh, so, so Metro, one to mention first, the larger bid, are they like a larger, kind of...
They are providing power, um, mental health services to the jail.
Okay, but I mean, are they a larger corporation, or...
Yes.
Okay. And Clearwater may maybe something to do with...
Yes.
That's what we're having, okay. And whenever it seems just a big discrepancy, I'm wondering, is it really happening, right?
Yes, it's the same, same service.
Okay.
Okay, so your recommendation is thirty thousand, five hundred?
That's right.
So we weigh the motion?
I make a motion to accept the...
Send it. Move in second, accept play one, thirty thousand, five hundred. Any further discussion? Yes?
So, suddenly we need to sign that document?
Yes. Well, I'm thinking that we need to have, these are the proposals right here, um, this one is, does have signature lines on it. The one from Metro does not have any signature on it, but the one that was voted for, will have a signature on it.
So can we add some language to your motion to authorize somebody at the county to sign that, so this can come back here? Or do you want...
On the phone. You want to like...
So usually, somebody at the county, whether it's the chairperson, the county administrator, the sheriff, somebody would sign the, the contract.
Okay.
And I'm just, if you don't want it to come back to you as just kind of a housekeeping item, then you can add it to the language of the motion now.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to me and, uh, the county administrator for a signature on that.
Second it. Okay, second that. Alright, all in favor of that motion? Good. So then, deal. That's all for home business. Got one item. Let's move on to miscellaneous, which we have nothing in the miscellaneous, no. Oh, let's go into executive session for... Have we had a motion?
I move that we move into executive session. MR, I'd say four, five, six, eight, personal matters, in the day.
Okay, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion? We are in executive session at?
Reporting stop.
358.